I'd like to call this meeting to order. Indication by Mr. Tim Long, District 12, and pledge allegiance by Mr. Al Walker, District 13.
Heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight, we ask that you provide us the guidance and discernment needed in deciding the next steps to move our beloved school district forward. May we always implement a vision of unity that extends to the hearts and needs of all stakeholders. As Christmas approaches, a season based on love, peace, and charity, let the birth of Christ, child, allow us to refocus our hearts on doing your will. May the message of Christmas and the love it brings touch the lives of all students, employees, and families. Keep us safe this holiday season, and let us never forget the true reason for the season of Christmas. We ask all this in your holy name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Ms. Babbitt?
Yes.
Ms. Huddleston?
Here.
Ms. Thomas? Ms. Petita?
Here.
Dr. Brod?
Here.
Dr. Gia?
Here.
Ms. Boodwa?
Here.
Mr. Dufresne?
Here.
Mr. Schwest?
Here.
Mr. Plazos?
Here.
Mr. Plantz?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Archer?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Ms. Shadie?
Here.
We have to form. E to recognize Mr. Frank Pasquale, Director of Child Welfare and Attendance for 52 years of dedicated service to the LaFouche Parish School District. Thank you, Mr. Frank.
Mr. Pasquale, before you begin, I'd like to just get a couple words. I know you have some remarks prepared, and I'd like to present this to you. You all know, Mr. Pasquale has been an instrumental leader in LaFouche Parish. Fifty-two years of service to LaFouche Parish Schools. He began teaching in 1969. Before that, he served in the army. Just to give you an idea of the longevity that he has been a part of LaFouche Parish, the president in January of 1969, LBJ, Lyndon B. Johnson, followed by Nixon, Carter, Reagan, Bush, Clinton, Bush again, Obama, and Trump, all while he was serving for LaFouche Parish. Top of those songs from 1969. "Hey Jude" by The Beatles, and "Sitting on the Dock of the Bay" by Louis Reddy. A brand-new Mustang in 1969 was $2,700, and a house was $25,000. This is when he began his time in LaFouche Parish. Through his many years in LaFouche Parish, Mr. Pasquale seen 12 superintendents, but one thing has remained the same. In all his years of service, Mr. Pasquale's love for the work remains constant. Mr. Pasquale's passion for the law, passion for being thorough, and dedication to the school system for which he devoted his decades-long career will never be parable. But our suspect of fact, he would admit that it is the people he loved most. He loved telling jokes, he loved drinking coffee, and he loved giving a complete story with all vividness. So today, we give tribute and pay honor to a great man, a true leader, and someone that has given so much and asked for so little, Mr. Pasquale. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you. President Houghton, please stand and mark. Members of the board. Today is my mother's birthday. How fitting it is because I owe so much to my parents, and especially my mother, for proper upbringing and education. In the summer of 2006, Mr. Bernard, myself, and our secretary, Mary Clausen, we all lost our mother within about just a few weeks. So I want to thank my mother especially tonight, hope she's looking down. I want to thank God, Jesus, for all the blessings that he's bestowed on me. And tonight, I would like to recognize one of those blessings, as my daughter stepped in. My other daughter, Helen, she studied for a nursing event, stayed up all night, couldn't be here. But her friend, Ms. Carey, a volunteer with the Land Support. So both of my daughters, as you know, I talk a lot of law. They had to suffer the peer pressures through high school by having to follow the vice principal. I can't imagine how tough that must have been, because they wouldn't come near me or run over me. But one is here tonight in support. I guess you could call it reaching adulthood. There hasn't been a day in the last 24 years that I didn't want to come to work here. I loved my job as a child welfare and attendance supervisor. I enjoyed working with Mr. Ray Bernard for almost 18 years, who was like a brother. And then Mr. Barry Phillips for the past six years, who says it's more like a father-son relationship. Talking about a father-son relationship, how about Superintendent Morton and Superintendent Martin? Whatever, I did my best to share with them, my passion in school, knowledge of discipline policy, real-life experiences, fairness in judgment, and learning when it's best to say "Stay the course." Now he's so good at it that principals and other school districts call him for second opinion. And by the way, Mr. Phillips is currently serving as second year as president of Louisiana Superior Children Welfare and Attendance Personnel. No one has ever served as second year, but because of the COVID-19 virus, we had no convention. We had no Colonel of Offices. So for the first time in district, Mr. Phillips remains a second year as president of our state association. I still hope, though, that he calls me sometimes. I can't say enough about the great secretaries that we had in Child Welfare Office and throughout the Central Office for that matter, and how much I appreciate them. Ms. Kimbrough is such an asset. I always thought a good secretary was the backbone of your department. Mr. Bernard knows that well. I haven't shared with you all, but sometimes when I worked late at night and things were quiet, I could still hear Mr. Bernard's voice echoing like a ghost in the hall. "Mary, Mary, Mary!" And Mary would come running. But supervisors and secretaries have been my second family in this office, growing amidst you all. The office holiday lunches that we had, the Boodoo jokes, monthly birthday celebrations, "What day is it?" They're reminded, "On Wednesday, hump day mornings," and you ask for coffee. Although working in Central Office removes one from the direct contact with students, the administrative decisions we make each day directly affect me. And with top scholar in graduation, we witness with pride our students as a final product of our decisions. We know they are prepared to take on the next chapter in their lives. That's the result of hard work and good educators. One of my greatest successes was serving after-work hours as a volunteer mentor, yes, a volunteer mentor, for the LaFouche Parish Student Candidates for the Festival. In the last 20 years, 10 of the 12 candidates that I mentored from LaFouche won that seat and represented all 715,000 Louisiana students on the State Board for one year. That's more students than any other parish. Their names and year served are on a plaque in our lobby. It shows how the students can compete with anyone. And it taught me that success in education is not always measured by how much money you make. My 52-year career was both challenging and rewarding. In retirement, I'm looking forward to having the time and the freedom to pursue my interests, whatever they may be. And hanging out with my family and friends and watching Notre Dame win the national championship. And of course, drinking coffee. I wish to thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and President Houghton, and the school board for this retirement recognition. But by the way, I have been warned by the leadership shown by Superintendent Morton to provide a quality education for our schoolchildren through a COVID-19 education nightmare and three threatening hardships, all in its first year as superintendent. I can't imagine what he'll have to do next year to top that. Maybe at his next evaluation, the board might consider a raise. Thank you very much.
Mr. Frank, you will have some comments on shore individually, so if you'd like to stay, you can hear them. I'd like to first call Mr. Ray Bernard.
Okay, first, all right. You know, Frank and I have been working together, you said 18 years. I thought it was a bit longer than that, but regardless, he talked about a brother. I'm an only child, and he's a brother I never had, okay? And I can say that without embarrassment or anything else like that, because we did a lot together. Frank is the most loyal, most compassionate, most soft-hearted, never want to take credit of any individual I've ever had opportunity to say that with no hesitation whatsoever. I often talk to Frank. I said, "Frank, why are you still working? It's been over 50 years." But I knew the answer, and he already said it. He said, "Well, you love what you do, it's never a job, right?" It's never a job. And he loved what he did, and he was great at it, and he still is great at it. I say this without hesitation as well, the mothers that are going to miss him most are the Child Welfare and Attendance Supervisors throughout the state. Whether you know it or not, he's an icon. He is an icon in there, uh... Whenever we have a conference, they always put Frank the last on the agenda. And you know what? Not because he's going to talk too much, but because they know that is the only way that they will keep those supervisors there for the remainder of that time on that agenda, the last day. And there's a reason for that, because on that last day, all those supervisors are there waiting for Frank's legislative brief on what the legislature has come up with concerning student discipline. They take that, they run back to their school board, and they start changing their student code of conduct. And you can rest assured, whatever Frank gave them is part of their updated Child Welfare and Attendance Student Code of Conduct. I do know this, that when Frank does remain at his house, he'll still be getting a lot of phone calls. Yeah, I know that. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. I do know this as well, that I hope that his retirement is a happy one. I hope that New Orleans or Notre Dame continue to win. I will cherish those moments that you, me, Mary Clausen, and Colonel Rice worked together. Those are memories that when you think of the positions that you're in and the jobs that you worked at, there are certain times in your life that you can't forget. And working with Frank Pasquale for 18 years is one of them, and with Mary Clausen and with Colonel Rice. So I thank you, Frank. Thank you a lot for many of the things that you have taught me, not by your, not by talking to me, but by silence and by offering corrections in a way that wouldn't humiliate me, but make me know that I was wrong. And I appreciate that as well. So Frank, have a great retirement, and I'll miss you, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Ms. Petita?
Yes. Well, I had the pleasure of working with Frank here when I was at the Central Office, and I have a couple of funny stories. One night, I was in charge of the school scores, and so they had come in, and it was about 10 o'clock, so I came back here and got, it got to my office, and I was on this end and Frank's on this end. I didn't, I thought I was alone in the building. He thought he was alone in the building, and I forgot something in my car when I went out, I set the alarm off. So I rushed back in, we looked at each other, and we were like, "Ah!" Because neither one, but that's how Frank was. He would work here till 10, 11 o'clock every night. And so I learned my lesson that whenever I had to come back late, I always went to tell Frank that I was there. And then we, Frank and Ray and I, we were like, we always got together and with little jokes and stuff. And I decided that we, it was a joke that we had heard, and so I got, one day I saw these three monkeys, and it was like a joke, they hear no evil, see no evil, speak no evil. And so I did a little poem, and we decided that whoever would, we kept the monkeys in our office, and whoever would retire first would take the monkey and give it to somebody else. That person would have two, and then when they left, they'd give it to the last person that was here. So when I left, Ray got my monkey, and he kept it for a few years while I was gone. And then Frank got it when Ray left. We thought that monkey was never going to leave this office, the three monkeys stayed here forever. And lo and behold, a month or so ago, Ray came to a school board meeting with a bag, and he said, "Look what I have." He had the three monkeys. So they did make their rounds, and we didn't think they were going to leave from. But it was a pleasure working with you. And I was telling Mr. Superintendent Morton today that when I went ahead and got the certification for Child Welfare and Attendance, and I said, "And guess who taught some of the classes? Ray and Frank." So I said, "I said anybody could get that certification." But they did a great job, and it was really fun working with you, Frank. And you always had answers to all of my questions, even when I left the, when I went to work for the Diocese. I'd call Frank, and he'd give me what I needed to know.
I remember.
Yes, and he was so accurate. Appreciate it, and I love you.
Who's next? Mrs. Wong?
Ms. Pasquale, first of all, I want to thank you for everything you've done personally for me through the years as an administrator, working closely with LaFouche Parish, working in the community. But I'd like to go back, I'll tell a few people this story, and I think it's a fun story. When I put my application in for LaFouche Parish to come in as a new teacher, I listed Frank Pasquale as reference. Well, it ended up getting hired at Central Fouch, and I was here at the Central Office filling out all the paperwork, all the insurance paperwork and everything, back in that back conference room. And I'm sitting there, got a stack of paperwork, and all of a sudden this guy walked in, I'd never laid eyes on him before, and he said, "Do I know you?" "No, sir, I don't think so." I had no idea who he was. He said, "Well, you listed Frank Pasquale as a reference." And I said, "Well, yes, sir." I said, "I was at Plaquemine High School, and that was my assistant principal's name, Frank Pasquale." But come to find out, there are four of them. They, apparently the grandpa had four.
Yes, grandpa.
Grandpa had four.
It's an Italian custom to name your first boy after your father. And so I was named Frank Pasquale, and he had seven brothers, I had several uncles, and each had a Frank Pasquale. But there's only two of us left, and the one from Plaquemine, you speak, he's got bad cancer, and he's in Phoenix, Arizona, stage four. And I call him once a week, so I don't know, but we might use him, and then that's going to make me the only one.
Anyway, after I moved into the parish, and we figured that out, and then after I was here, I don't know, a year or so, I had the opportunity, at the invitation of Mr. Pasquale and Mr. Bernard, to go to a Child Welfare and Attendance Conference and learn a tremendous amount, just in those couple of days in Alexandria. And between Mr. Bernard and Mr. Pasquale and Ms. Clausen, I don't believe her, because I called her a many a time as an administrator, I could always get an answer. Might not be the answer I wanted, but I could always get an answer, and I could always get the right answer. And as a rookie administrator in this parish, it was extremely important to me at that point to know my way around the discipline process and how we did things differently than other parishes I've been in. And I want to thank you personally for that. And probably one of the highlights of my career was an administrative conference, our general start-of-the-year administrators workshop. And one year, Mr. Bernard and Mr. Pasquale selected me as the best coffee maker in the academy. That is an award that I definitely entailed in. So thank y'all very much, and thank you, Mr. Pasquale, for everything you've done for me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Tina Babbitt?
So I have a little different experience that I'd like to share. Mr. Pasquale was the assistant principal at Temple Hill when I was a student at Temple Hill. And even no matter how many students there were under roof, anytime Mr. Pasquale saw you, he always has a huge smile for you, and it was like you knew exactly who you were. Whether he knew your name or not, he never let on that he didn't. One of my years at Temple Hill, our football team won the state championship. And it was so late, we were coming back from the Superdome, and everybody was in buses, and you know, we were coming down Tiger Drive, and everybody started yelling in the bus, and everybody was awaking, everybody was paying attention and looking out the window. Mr. Pasquale was waiting for us. He was at the Temple Hill Nursing Home on Tiger Drive, the facility, and the parking lot was empty, and he had a huge Temple Hill hot flag, and he was running from one end of the parking lot to the other, and he was screaming, and he was yelling, no tigers back and forth. And he was, he was so happy, and he always celebrated everything that we did at the school, anything that we had. You made it fun for us, you made it good. So thank you from a student, thank you for everything you've done for our parish, and from the board.
Ms. Babbitt?
I got to work with Frank as an administrator also, like Mr. Long. And don't let the principals fool you, Frank. We enjoy your legislative updates, like Mr. Bernard said. I'm a lover of the law myself, so I really enjoy it, and you would get up there and tell us things about the law, so thank you for that, and thank you for your 52 years. That's awesome. Appreciate it.
Mr. Archer?
Thank you, Madam President. When I think of Mr. Pasquale, I think of great stories. He's such a great storyteller, and he has such a pleasant voice that puts you at ease. You kind of like sink into the story, he's very detailed. We had close relationships working together, along with Mr. Bernard and Ms. Clausen, I believe, during the past program, since I had a chance to work there for several years. It was some good times and challenging times, no doubt, but we worked it out, it was a lot of great fun. And I often mentioned to Ms. Bernard in passing that Mr. Pasquale would make a great consultant for someone, because he loves the law, he's very detailed, very thorough, and when he gives you something, it's going to be right. So, and I often think about that, and I say, "Boy, he's missing his calling, he'd be good for some lawyer's office or some consultant office, just researching and giving out to participants who could use that information." So all in all, thanks a lot, thanks for all your great service and time, and I wish you the very best in the future.
Thank you, welcome to you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Archer.
I didn't tell him before, but I did tell him tonight, I said, "Frank, you could be our volunteer consultant."
Volunteer, I like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Phillips?
So I, I mean, I could go on and on, but I'm going to try to keep this as short as possible, because I have so many stories to share with Frank, and not only our six years, because Frank and I go back a long ways. When I was, he worked with my father-in-law at Temple Hill High School, who my father-in-law retired as a 33-year ag teacher, and Frank worked with him for several years at Temple Hill High School. We would take a trip every May to either Temple Hill Island or Grand Island, and we had many good times on our island in Temple Hill and Grand Island, Frank fishing delights at night, all night.
Cooking breakfast for everyone.
Cooking breakfast for everybody. So I have so many stories about Frank. So when I came into the office in 2014, I knew Frank, and my first question to Frank was, "Frank, what advice can you give me? What single advice you could give me? Most beneficial advice you could give me as a new Child Welfare and Attendance Supervisor?" And he said, "You remember, Frank, stay the course." He said it earlier, and I have that on my computer today. He said, "Stay the course. As long as you stay the course, you can't go wrong." And so I often think about those words when I make a decision on a daily basis, what Frank said. But I just hope, when I'm Frank's age, I'm as sharp as Frank, I have the mind that Frank has, and the help that Frank has, and it's really great working with him. Just to give you an idea of how respected he is out there in the Child Welfare and Attendance world, everywhere we go, every conference we go to, Frank is the center of attention. Frank is the person that people want to talk to. Frank is the person that Jim Prescott wants to talk to, who owns Forethought, who reviews and approves our policies and write our policies. Jim and Frank are on speed dial, and Jim is quick to call Frank before finalizing a policy on a regular basis. And Frank is quick to catch all of his efforts. And so it's been a pleasure working with him. I thank him for allowing me to network, or introducing me to the right people, the right places, which has kind of allowed me to be in the position I am now as president of our state association. It was all because of Frank's introduction to the association and introduction to the new members and the right people. And Frank, thanks for everything, and we don't miss you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Mr. Plazos?
I've never had the pleasure of working with Mr. Pasquale, but I can tell you this, the last two years, no one can question that, guarantee your dedication to your job. Just even coming to the board meetings, you're here every board meeting, even when you don't have to be, and so there's no question. But I can tell you this also, you have some huge shoes to be filled by someone else, whoever the person may be. But 52 years, that's impressive by itself, and you definitely have have to love your job, and you never complain, you come here, you do it, you give your reports, and they're very thorough. So, whoever that person is, they're going to have, uh, quite, quite a bit to handle, but I can tell you, it's been very helpful to us as the board, I'm sure as the superintendent as well, I'm sure he can say many things to that accord as well, so thank you very much, Mr. Frank.
You're telling my sister phone call, or?
That's volunteer consultant. Anyone else? Mr. Ray?
There's one thing I, I forgot to say, every, every year, the child welfare and attendance supervisors in the state give what we call the Wilford-Rousseau Award, which indicates the individual which the, all the child welfare and attendance people feel promotes the ideals of child welfare and attendance in the state, the number-one individual that every one of those supervisors in the state recognize as the person who deserves that award, and Frank got that, and rightfully so. And two little, little things, a, a little, little joke, not joke, but Frank, the way his mind been, uh, Frank took me to the first child welfare and attendance conference, and there was a buffet, and Frank said, "Ray, follow me, don't let them fool you, because the first thing is a salad. Don't fill your plate with that salad now, watch it, because then they get, you're going to fill it up, and then, then you won't get the good thing, the meat. Now, watch me close." So, and, boy, he passed that salad up, get right to the meat. And another story, the first story, Frank, uh, whenever Frank gets his mind set on something, uh, he, he will do it, he will keep doing it until he has it mastered. Well, when he's in the service, he's telling me the story that he mastered the Morris code. Boy, he knew that Morris code, nobody else knew it but he knew it. And then, I think he was in the Pacific Ocean, and all of a sudden, he got, he got a special code, nobody else on the boat or anywhere else, Marilyn Monroe had died. And what did, what did you do with that, uh?
Well, we had, uh, we had a whole, I was, we, we, we were patrolling, we had a fleet, we had about seven or eight ships, and we had several thousand men. And I would go, after I'd do my eight-hour shift, I would, uh, I would practice, practice my code, and so I would get, try to get a news station so I could type it, and I got this news station, and I start typing, and it said, "Marilyn Monroe is dead." And we are in the Pacific, out of nowhere, there's no man in sight, and I'm the only one in the fleet that knows that Marilyn Monroe is dead. So, I was the one that, that got the word out to the thousands of sailors, and, uh, there was a couple of other things. I picked up a Russian sub one back one day, and I started a 17-ship, uh, in, in California that chased a sub all the way to Alaska, and we lost it in the Thaum, and came back triple, we, we chased it for 17 days, and no, nobody knew that Russian sub was right off the coast of San Diego. And, uh, so that was a few experiences in the Navy, and that was in business. That was one of them, uh, now I'm grown, and I just had to tell everybody. The first thing I thought of, I have to admit, she could have had me.
Does anybody else have any other comment? Mr. Dupren?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start by saying that you are truly one of the most genuine, passionate people I've ever met in my entire life, especially when it comes to your job, and just like with you, teaching is my passion, and you don't work a day in your life, it's truly what you love. So, you are not only a friend, but a true mentor and role model to me, and I want to say thank you. And when I was at mentor training in Baton Rouge, I was circling the park and I tried to find a, a good parking spot where I didn't have to walk a mile to the hotel, and I pass, and I, I see this gentleman unloading his car, and I'm like, "I'm so familiar." It was Mr. Frank. So, I had to stop, and I told him hello, and we decided to have breakfast the next morning, and that was one of the, the most interesting and intriguing conversations I had. He filled me in, I think you were there to go to a VESI board meeting, uh, with truancy and maybe the charter school, and, you know, he filled me in, and I walked away knowing so much, just from our conversation. And it wasn't like a, a boring lecture, it was truly intriguing, and I appreciate that, and I hope that, even though you're retiring, we can still have many more of those conversations over a big cup of coffee.
Why you don't?
So, thank you for that, I appreciate that, and thank you for all you've given me with that role.
Anybody else?
I, um, I want to say, I never had the pleasure of working with you directly, except, you know, during the board, or about my term on the board was, but I can tell you, working at my day job, when Gennell Wilder found out I worked with Frank Pasquale, the whole St. James office heard you worked with Frank Pasquale, you really are a star, so you kept, she is Miss Personality.
Oh, she is.
And she always counted on you, but everybody was saying, would say, "You, you work with Frank?" I said, "You know Frank?" No, but Gennell did. Gennell does. So, um, she shared many a stories with me of, uh, your dedication, your passion, you lending your ear, your knowledge, um, as Ray said, and most everyone else, that it can always count on you. If they needed something, you were there, you knew, or you found out. So, uh, I've enjoyed my time working with you, and I hope to see you. Congratulations on 52 years.
Thank you.
Mr. Frank, please help yourself to the cake, this last, take him home, we're having any other way.
Frank, give the salad. You want milk?
Absolutely.
And y'all have a great meeting. And finally, being a president and happening.
Such a genuine man, and so much dedication to the school system, and, uh, you're right, one does have intentions to feel, and it's more, you are going to be toward helping feel those shoes. Two, approval of board consent agenda. A, approval of board consent agenda items. B, minutes of special board meeting and public hearing held November 4th, 2020. C, minutes of regular board meeting held November 4th, 2020. D, members of policy and procedure committee meeting held November 17th, 2020. E, minutes of land and facilities management committee meeting held November 17th, 2020. F, minutes of finance committee meeting held November 18th, 2020. And G, minutes of academic committee meeting held November 18th, 2020. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Randy West, seconded by Dr. Mary Bro. Is there any comment from the audience? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote.
A tambo, all in favor? Motion passage unanimously. Three, approval of policy and procedure committee recommendations as per meeting held November 17th, 2020. Mr. Ray Benard?
Approve, approve divisions of policy BDA, officers E, F, P, business continuity and technology disaster recovery, new policy, approve the LPSD business continuity and technology disaster recovery plan.
Motion by Mr. Ray Benard, seconded by Mr. Tyler Dupren. Is there any discussion from the public? Any discussion from the board? Motion passage unanimously. Four, to approval of land and facilities management committee recommendations as per meeting held November 17th, 2020. Mr. Randy West?
Thank you, Madam President. A, to accept a credit change order in the amount of $19,807,000 for securing renovations project at Central Fouch High School, South Fouch High School, and Timbuktu High School. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy West, seconded by Ms. Mary Katina. Is there any discussion? Any discussion from the board or public comment? Motion passage unanimously.
B, to advocate, to authorize to advertise forbid of the new Timbuktu Middle School Phase 2 when construction documents are complete. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy West, seconded by Mr. Dennis Gia, Dr. Dennis Gia, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion from the, from the audience? Any discussion from the board? Motion passage unanimously.
C, to accept a request from Biddy Basketball Association of Lefouch to waive all fees associated with the rental of school gyms in the area for a three-year period through 2023. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy West, seconded by Ms. Tina Babin. Is there any discussion from the audience? Any discussion from the board?
This breaks revenge?
Motion passage unanimously. Thank you, Ms. West. Five, approval of finance committee recommendations as per meeting held November 18th, 2020. Dr. Mary Bro?
Thank you. A, to establish a $711,529.13 budget for Wi-Fi and supporting infrastructure upgrades at various campuses in the parish to be funded by E-Rate 80% and the IT Connections Project of the 2017 construction by 20% for the 2020 E-Rate funding period. So moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Bro, seconded by Mr. Tyler Dupren. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? Motion passage unanimously.
B, to establish a budget not to exceed $100,000 for Wi-Fi and supporting infra, infrastructure upgrades at E-Rate ineligible sites across the parish to be funded by IT funds or the IT Connections Project of the 2017 construction by 20%.
Motion by Dr. Mary Bro, seconded by Ms. Kirsty Schapierre. Is there any discussion from the public? Any discussion from the board? Motion passage unanimously.
C, to consider approving submission for E-Rate funding for Category 1 and 2 equipment and services for the 2021 funding period not to exceed $2,457,906. So moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Bro, seconded by Mr. Barry Plaisance. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion?
Thank you, ma'am.
Motion passage unanimously.
D, to consider approving submission for E-Rate funding for Category 1 and 2 equipment and services for the 2021 funding period not to exceed $2,457,906.
So moved. Motion by Dr. Mary Bro, seconded by Mr. Tim Long. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Plaisance? Thank you. Ms. DePlaize?
They're not the same.
They are exactly the same, there's one word.
It's a duplication. Exact same word.
Yeah, they do the exact same.
Jamie, that's, there's something in there that is supposed to be.
I believe, I believe the fourth item was, was to approve, uh, going out for public bid for the equipment, um, that was approved in, again, the item.
We're going to have to table that one. We're going to have to table this. Table D. Thank you, Ms. DePlaize and Ms. Plaisance, um, sorry, Jamie, we'll table that one, and, um, we'll try to re-bring it up. Ms. Fertitta?
But we added as a, unanimous vote, add it to the agenda.
I know we did it in a final. We can come back to it. Can you, can you guys continue? Give me, give me.
So, we'll table D under Finance Committee for right now, and we'll come back to it, um, once we get some better guidance.
One more.
Yes, sir.
So, I move that we table that item till later.
Thank you, Dr. Gia. Seconded by Ms. Valerie Gujwa, all in favor? Motion passage unanimously. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to make a point, just for those, uh, who are watching or following us on Facebook, that, you know, it seems like a whole lot of money, $2,457,000, and we're all just voting it, but this was explained thoroughly and discussed at the, um, Finance Committee meeting, so, um, it's something that, you know, if you're interested in why we go through it, so quickly follow us at, on the committee, the committee meetings.
And they can go ahead and watch it, because it's still, it's still on our webpage or our Facebook page, so you can watch it to see the discussion if you'd like, definitely. Thank you, Ms. Fertitta. Thank you, Dr. Gia and Ms. Plaisance. So.
Okay, so, can we move to add, um, the item, and it should read, "To consider authorizing advertisement for proposals for the 2021 E-Rate project to include additional equipment not covered under the previous E-Rate project."
So, first, we'll vote to add the item.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Dennis Gia, seconded by Mr. Tim Long. Is there any discussion on adding the item to the agenda?
Need to get out of the state, though.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Any discussion by the board? If not, we'll vote. All in favor? Motion passed unanimously, so we'll add the agenda item. We'll add the item to the agenda. Now we'll vote on that item. Dr. Mary Bro.
To consider authorizing advertisement for proposals for the 2021 E-Rate Project to include additional equipment not covered under the previous E-Rate Project. So moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Bro, seconded by Mr. Randy Schwes. Is there any comment from the public? Any comment from the board? Jamie, do you want to say anything about the bidding process or? Okay. Mostly discussed in the meeting.
Yes.
Alrighty. If not, we'll vote. Queen, you want to hand vote on that? Okay. Hand vote, all in favor? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Morton and Dr. Bro.
And Mr. Plazons.
Six, New business. A, To approve recommend, to approve the recommended revisions to the LPSD Code of Conduct as per requirements of Act 48 of 2020. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Valerie Boujwa, seconded by Mr. Barry Plazons. Are there any board, board discussion? Excuse me, public discussion? Any board discussion? Mr. Benard?
Yes, these two items, A and B, I'd opt to sit on this particular committee and I would like not to put Barry on the spot, but I think it's important that we understand exactly what they contain. This did not go through the Policy Committee because it has to be enacted by the way. But this, this is something that we need to understand and also the public that is listening concerning our virtual learning and to help us stay out of any type of strategic things that may come up, and this will protect us. So Barry, could you just give us a quick overview of that if you don't mind?
Sure. As a result of Act 48 of 2020 passing, which is a virtual discipline law, it required several things, one of which to reconvene our Disciplined Code of Conduct Committee, which we did November 30th, to devise a virtual discipline plan, which we did. All of you have been sent a copy of that plan. Most of you who have had an opportunity to review that plan. It really consists of five parts. It consists of a virtual work setting, which the virtual work setting is basically is where will that workstation be located? What should that workstation look like? So forth and so on. It also consists of a dress code component. We had contemplated possibly requiring our students to wear uniforms, which some districts have opted to do that. We, on the other hand, chose not to do that, but we did require, we have some verbiage in there that explains what is appropriate and what is not appropriate as far as dress during a virtual setting. That's all included in that as well. Also included is a section, of course, on discipline for virtual learners, which includes the types of consequences associated with specific violations of the Student Code of Conduct. The fourth would be a section for discipline for students with disability, and that basically is a reminder of consideration of faith when it comes to discipline on a virtual platform. And then the last component of that plan was the appeal process. The appeal process, which was probably the biggest component of that plan, now allows certain suspensions to be appealed to the board and, of course, and potentially to the district court system as well. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have about that, those guidelines at this time. Ray?
Yeah, I do have one question. Will these guidelines be going out to parents individually and they'll sign off that they've received a copy, or will it just be part of the Student Code of Conduct?
I haven't had that discussion with Mr. Morton yet, but I'm assuming we all alike as we'll send that out and ask that those parents sign off as we do with all of our information at the beginning of the year. We're gonna notify, before we enforce, we're gonna notify. So we're gonna notify the parents, the students, the teachers. Mr. Morton is gonna present this to the teachers tomorrow. I'll be in truancy course, I won't be at the principal's meeting, but we're prepared to roll this out before we enforce it.
Okay. Mr. Morton?
I'd like to add to your question, Mr. Benard. It's important that it gets sent to, at some point, we have to educate everyone on this because I think a lot of parents right now make the assumption that if their child is in-person learning, that this doesn't apply to them. But this could apply to any student at the drop of a hat if a school has to transition to virtual because of a COVID outbreak. And so it's incumbent upon us, as soon as this is adopted, to make everyone aware of this because it's even more applicable to a temporary setting of a virtual program because we will be using more Google Meets, more in-person live lessons than what our pure virtual learners are doing, which is largely a software that doesn't involve all of the pitfalls associated with many of a virtual setting. So it's a complex problem, and our challenge is gonna be getting this out to everyone so they understand it.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Is there any further discussion from the board? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously. B, To approve revisions to policies BD, school board policy JD, discipline JDD suspension JDE expulsion as per requirements of Act 48 of 2020. Mr. Barry Phelps?
President Houston, Superintendent Morton, members of the board. Policy BD is our discipline policy, pertains to our Discipline Policy Review Committee. This policy outlines the requirements of a school board to direct a systematic review of discipline policies and the makeup of the committee, and is being amended as a result of the passing of Act 48 of 2020. The policy has been amended reflecting minor changes in verbiage. The current verbiage of the school board appointing a discipline policy review committee will be replaced with establishing a discipline policy review committee. Instead of selected as required by law, the new verbiage would be in accordance with Louisiana law statute 7416. This policy BD, as revised by Forthorpe Consulting, has been reviewed by Child Welfare and Attendant Staff and our Board Attorney, Mr. Ted Almody, and is in order. I recommend approval for adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Is there any discussion from the public? Sorry, do I have a motion? Excuse me.
Are we, should I go over all the policies? Or are we just, are we just doing one policy at a time, or did you introduce individually?
It's done as one policy and written here, correct? Dr. Bro? It's all together, it's like one policy.
So should I just go through all of them and then?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Policy JD is a discipline policy. This policy outlines the enforcement of disciplinary accountability within our schools. The final sentence within this paragraph was amended to reflect the enforcement of disciplinary standards that will be conducted in accordance with the school board's Student Code of Conduct. This policy also includes an addition of a new section of our Code of Conduct entitled Discipline of Students Engaged in Virtual Instruction. This requires LEAs to adopt disciplinary measure, disciplinary measures that define the rules of conduct and expectations of students engaged in virtual instruction, including clearly defining consequences of conduct, and shall take into consideration the students and their families' rights to privacy and other constitutional rights while at home or in a location that is not school property. Any such disciplinary measures adopted by the school board shall be included in the school board's Student Code of Conduct. Furthermore, the definition of virtual instruction is added to this policy, which is defined as instruction provided to a student through an electronic delivery medium, including but not limited to electronic learning platforms that connect to a student in a remote location to classroom instruction. Policy JDB suspensions. This policy outlines protocols for suspensions and appeals. The policy has been amended to include a statement under suspension appeals to include as follows. The parent or tutor of a pupil who has been recommended for expulsion, including if the recommendation is reduced to a suspension, shall have the right to request review by the school board of such recommendation, or appeal to the parish district court as appropriate in accordance with revised statute 7416. The appeal timeframe will follow our current appeal timeframe process, expulsion appeals which would be five days and ten-day appeal to the district courts. And then policy JDE expulsions. Verbiage has been added to this section titled Appeals, which now includes the following changes. The parent or tutor of the pupil who has been recommended for expulsion in accordance with state law made within five days after the decision to expel has been rendered, request the school board to review the findings of the superintendent or designee at a time set by the school board. Otherwise, the decision of the superintendent shall be fine. If requested as herein provided, and after reviewing the findings of the superintendent or his or her designee, the school board may affirm, modify, or reverse the action previously taken. The parent or tutor of the pupil shall have such right of review even if the recommendation is to reduce to suspension. The parent or tutor of the pupil who has been recommended for expulsion in accordance with state law made within ten days, appeal to the district court an adverse ruling of the board and uphold the action of the superintendent or his or her designee. The court may reverse or revise the ruling of the board upon a finding that the ruling of the board was based on an abundance or, I'm sorry, an absence of any relevant evidence and support thereof. The parent or tutor of the pupil shall have such right to appeal to the district court even if the recommendation for expulsion is reduced to a suspension. Policy JDE, JDE as the other policies, as revised by Forthorpe Consulting, has been reviewed by Child Welfare and Attendants, our Board Attorney, Mr. Ted Almody, and is in order. I recommend approval for adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Tyler Dufrin, seconded by Mr. Joey DePlanos. Is there any, is there any public discussion? Is there any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously. C, To continue as the date, time, and place of regular meetings for the 2021, the first Wednesday of every month at 7:00 PM in the school board office in accordance with policy BC meetings, and waive the policy for the month of April, setting the date for the second Wednesday, April 14th, 2021, second Wednesday of the month. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Al Archer, seconded by Mr. Tim Long. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously. Seven memorial resolutions. Ms. Susan Prospery, retired teacher, Ms. Tina Babin?
Ms. Susan Prospery was hired as a teacher by LaFouche Parish School Board on August 5th, 1964 at Tivodot Upper Elementary. She was on her teaching position on June 4th, 1965. On August 24th, 1977, Ms. Prospery was rehired as a teacher in the district at Tivodot Elementary in WSA Fall. She retired from LaFouche Parish School District on May 23rd, 2000, and served as a teacher for twenty-three years. I'd also like to add that Ms. Prospery was a wonderful, caring, self-spoken teacher, and her resignation is because she was not a third-grade teacher at Tivodot Elementary. She was wonderful, and she will be missed. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Thank you, Ms. Babin. B, Mr. Ernest Bouvier, retired teacher, Mr. Tim Long?
Mr. Ernest Bouvier was hired by the LaFouche Parish School Board on August 27th, 1957 as a teacher at Galliano Elementary School. Mr. Bouvier also worked at Rose Cut Off Elementary and LaRose Elementary. He later served as Assistant Principal at LaRose Elementary and LaRose Upper Elementary. He then returned back to teaching at LaRose Upper Elementary and Cut Off Elementary before retiring on June 1st, 1990, serving in LaFouche Parish School System for a total of thirty-three years. I move that this resolution be adopted by the general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Mr. Albert Danos, retired bus operator, Mr. Barry Plazons?
Mr. Albert Danos was hired on August 27th, 1956 as a bus operator for LaFouche Parish School District. Mr. Danos was rehired, retired, on August 30th, 1981, serving LaFouche Parish School District for a total of twenty-five years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Thank you, Mr. Plazons. D, Ms. Lorraine Adams, retired child nutrition technician, Mr. Tyler Dufrin?
Ms. Lorraine Adams was hired as a child nutrition technician at LaRose Cut Off Junior High School on August 25th, 1972. Ms. Adams retired on August 9th, 1993, serving the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of twenty-one years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Thank you, Mr. Dufrin. E, Mr. Alan Delong, retired janitor, Ms. Mary Catina?
Mr. Alan Delong was hired by LaFouche Parish School Board on August 19th, 1965 as a janitor at West Tivodot Junior High School. Mr. Delong retired on April 24th, 1984, serving LaFouche Parish School District for a total of nineteen years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Thank you, Ms. Catina. Let the board, let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and will be recorded on a special page of our minute book. A, Ten fifth dates for future meetings. A, there will be no committee meeting held the month of December. B, Advisory Committee, Monday, January 4th, 2021. C, Regular Board Meeting, Wednesday, January 6th, 2021. If there's no further business here, we are adjourned.